We will be starting the meeting in one minute. Could everyone, everyone please return to your seats? Want to call the council meeting today to order. Does anyone have any special intentions today?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. Please remember the family of a longtime Kenner resident who now lives in Saint Tammany Parish, Terry Bolot. They split the District Five and he passed away recently. Thank you.
Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I also ask that you keep in your memory and prayers Homer Abel, who was a coach at Highway Park. He recently passed away and please keep his family in him in your prayers. Thank you.
Councilman Shawwath?
Uh, thank you. Again, I wanted to thank all our first responders here in Kenner and across the nation and pray that they stay safe over the holiday season and upcoming holidays. Also, I also have a good friend that I grew up with years ago. He now resides in Texas and he's battling pancreatic cancer. And he's not going to make it and his days are numbered. So I want to keep him in my prayers and let him know that I'm thinking about it. Thank you.
Okay, I would ask everyone to stand and for Councilwoman McKenney to lead us in prayer.
Please bow your heads. Lord God, thank you for this day and for the opportunity to come together to make impactful decisions for our community and work together for the best of Kenner. On this day, please give us direction, fortitude, and grace to deal with anything that may lay ahead. May we seek your guidance and work steadfastly in your name. Amen.
Amen. Councilmember Shawwath, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenney and Shawwath. Also, we will be asking people if they would be interested in doing the prayer or the pledge. And we will also be reaching out to pastors at churches again, starting next month. But if you would like to lead us in those two things, please make sure my assistant Jessica Nash knows before the next council meeting. Council?
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Mr. Chairman, we've received a request to change the order of business to take Item 18A at the beginning of the meeting.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney to move that 18A to the beginning of the meeting. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, if you're opposed.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero to change your order of business. Item 18A, at the request of the administration and executive session regarding Romelli Janitorial Service Incorporated versus the City of Kenner, 24th JDC, 806-208 Division J. I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney to adjourn into executive session.
Councilmembers, please vote. Aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. We will now be in an executive session. We'll return shortly.
It is about fifteen minutes on the executive session, I was told.
The meeting will restart in one minute.
One second. One second.
Oh. I changed.
Why? Because it's bludge-- is bludge your claim? Okay, so this fifteen F. F.
I have a motion by councilmember Brannigan, second by councilmember McKenney to reconvene. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
So, seven zero reconvene.
We have correspondence, reports from the mayor, C O or department heads.
Mayor Glazer.
Thank you. Just a couple of brief comments. I received notice from the National Flood Insurance Program. Our community rating system is once again a class six for the next three years, which pretty much the community qualifies for a twenty percent discount on flood insurance premiums for the next three years. So, it's been in place. We would just renew it for another three years. I've got several comments about, from the public that go to Rouse's and mostly after, after dark and Vintage and Williams, the lights with the palm trees on both sides getting a lot of, it looks much better. You know, the lights are bright. Kind of adds a little light to the area, makes the trees look well. And as Jose told me, the reason it didn't work, it looked like somebody hit them all with a baseball bat over, you know, some, you know, some years ago. So they back up and running. And on February third here in Rivertown at six thirty, we're going to have Kenner's Black History Month kickoff concert with the Baptiste Brothers. And the annual, and the annual photographs will be back in the planetarium. So that every Saturday and the photographs are free to the public to go in and view. But it's Friday, February third at six thirty to nine thirty, Baptiste Brothers. And a bittersweet comment I'm gonna make, I just told the council walking out of the executive session that this is Mike Powers' last meeting as city attorney.
What?
He's gonna retire. But, but when we, but when, when we told him, we hope he forgets that he made the comment, he's agreed to work up to fifteen, I think seventeen hours a week. So he's gonna be a part timer. He just doesn't want to run the day-to-day office. So, he'll be, the knowledge will still be here, but he just doesn't want the headaches. And that's it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mike, for your service to the city for the last six months to get through this, the changes we have had to deal with. Does anyone else want to say anything? Councilmember Wilmot.
Yeah, I would just like to say ditto the same thing and, and mention that, you know, it's been smooth. And it's because a lot has to do with legal department. And, and you've been at that helm and we appreciate you. Thank you very much for your service.
Councilmember McKenney.
Yes. Thank you, council president. I just want to say thank you for all of your hard work and I appreciate everything that you've done to get the city's attorney's office back into high-functioning office. We, the council relies on a competent city attorney who's very knowledgeable and you've certainly met all of those goals and, and beyond. So, thank you, wish you well, and I hope to see you in the audience in future council meetings as, as a resident.
If I could say a word. Council chairman.
Yes, sir.
I very much appreciate having worked with everyone. There's a lot of new faces since I got here last July. And actually, he's got seven months. I promised him six, but he got seven. I can say that I have worked with administrations going back to Broussard. And this is by far the easiest bunch of people I've ever dealt with since I've dealt with the city of Kenner for most of my legal career, my adult career. And I thank the mayor for giving me the opportunity to, to reconstitute the city attorney's office, which was pretty much in a shambles when I got here. But thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Brennan.
Thank you, council president. Mike, we, we go back a long way and I echo that. I didn't clap when the mayor announced that. I didn't clap when the mayor announced that because I'm, I'm against it, but, so you'll know if you watch the replay. Thank you for everything you've done, we appreciate it.
Councilmember Dunn.
Yeah, Mike, I remember you, you know, since I was in politics for so long, but I do remember you in the Broussard days. And, and I'm really honored to just have this privilege to be able to sit on his side. Thank you, once again. Yes, thank you.
Council clerk.
Yes, sir. Under the consent agenda, I have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of January fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item two A is a resolution granting an alcoholic beverage permit to Friends of Rivertown on February third, two thousand twenty-three, at Kenner Heritage Park, two thousand fifteen, Fourth Street being property owned by the city of Kenner in Kenner, Louisiana. Item two B is a resolution granting alcoholic beverage permit to Friends of Rivertown on February twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, at Rivertown Parking Lot, four hundred block of Williams Boulevard being property owned by the city of Kenner. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item three A is application number twenty-three oh seven dash twenty-three, Washington Elementary to hold a public gathering on February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from ten a.m. to eleven thirty a.m. for the purpose of a Mardi Gras parade at six oh six Clay Street. Item three B is application twenty-three oh nine dash twenty-three, Driftwood Park Civic Association to hold a public gathering on February fourth, two thousand twenty-three, from one p.m. to four p.m. for the purpose of an annual parade in Driftwood. Item three C is application number twenty-three ten dash twenty-three, Crew of ISIS to hold a public gathering on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from six p.m. to ten p.m. for the purpose of a Mardi Gras parade in the city of Kenner. Item three D is application twenty-three twelve dash twenty-three, the city of Kenner to hold a public gathering on February twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, from eleven a.m. to three p.m. for the purpose of a Lundy Grill Festival in Rivertown. Item three E is application number twenty-three fourteen dash twenty-three, the city of Kenner to hold a public gathering on February third, two thousand twenty-three, from six thirty p.m. to nine thirty p.m. for the purpose of a kickoff concert for Black History Month in Rivertown. And that will conclude the consent agenda.
I have a motion by councilmember McKenney, second by councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item eight, public hearings and final passage, we have none. Item nine is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease and alienation of movable property, we have none. Item ten is opening of bids, we have none. Item eleven is reclassification of zoning for final passage, we have none. Item twelve is other ordinances for final passage. Item twelve A is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty-eight, an ordinance authorizing the city of Kenner to hold a public auction on February ninth, two thousand twenty-three, to sell surplus movable property no longer needed for public purpose and settling, setting the terms and disposition of the proceeds from the sale.
Got a motion by councilmember Branigan, second by councilmember Lahat. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this? Seeing none. Councilmember Wilmot.
Yeah, if I can't, just get an explanation on it. Moveables?
Yeah, it's a online sale. Everything will be viewed online.
And what is everything?
Uh, all the artifacts that they put into the auction, it's gonna be like vehicles, old desk equipment, fire hoses, and even the fire department, items like that.
Any other comments? Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item twelve B is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty, an ordinance authorizing reimbursement of, of city of Kenner employees for providing their personal vehicle and wireless telephone.
I have a motion by councilmember Brennan, second by councilmember McKenney. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I've received a request for an amendment, please. Would you like me to read it into the record now?
Please.
I've received a request to amend the item to rename section five to six, and section five will now read, "An annual report indicating the financial breakdown for the expenditures herein should be provided to the council members during the annual budget process." I have a motion by councilmember Wilmot, seconded by councilmember Branigan on the amendment. Any discussion on your amendment?
Yeah, if I can, I'd just explain it, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, councilmember Wilmot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just proposing this amendment that we have it in there in place, just, just so that there's a checks and balances in place on, on this particular item, that the council has the, the ability to review the expenditures, that's all, thank you.
Okay, on the amendment, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero to amend. Back to your original motion.
Uh, motion by councilmember Brennan, second by councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item thirteen is resolutions and motions by council members, we have none. Item fourteen is items removed from the consent agenda, we have none. Item fifteen is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item fifteen A is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty-nine, an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Parish of Jefferson to fund purchasing flock safety automated license plate recognition system cameras for the Kenner Police Department.
I have a motion by councilmember Brennan, second by councilmember McKenney. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen B is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-one, an ordinance approving change order number three, final to the agreement with Ram J Construction LLC dated October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, regarding Lincoln Manor subdivision drainage improvements project, facility planning and control project number fifty dash M F one dash two zero dash zero one, city of Kenner project number P W dash two thousand twenty dash six dash D R for a decrease of ninety-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty cents for the Department of Public Works.
I have a motion by councilmember Dunn, second by councilmember Wilmot. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Mr. Morello. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen C is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-two, an ordinance approving an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, state project number H period zero one five zero eight seven, federal aid project number H zero one five zero eight seven for Kenner Discovery School sidewalks.
I have a motion by councilmember Brennan, second by councilmember McKenney. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen D is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-three, an ordinance accepting the lowest response a bid received from Howell Fencing to furnish and install vinyl fencing at various locations in accordance with letter bid number twenty-two dash twenty thirty-three in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars for the Department of Public Works.
Got a motion by councilmember Shaw, Shaworth, second by councilmember Wilmot. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen E is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-four, an ordinance authorizing the use of Louisiana Department of Agriculture and Forestry State Contract Number four four zero 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 two one one seven three, with Macro Companies Incorporated to purchase emergency on-demand fuel and supplies on an as-needed basis during a declared emergency for the Department of Fleet Management.
I have a motion by councilmember Lahat, second by councilmember Branigan. Is anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen F is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-five, an ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with W J Blocher Company LLC to provide professional services, labor only, for fixtures, lamps and wiring on an as-needed basis, increasing the not-to-exceed amount by a hundred thousand dollars annually for a total not-to-exceed amount of three hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services.
I have a motion by councilmember McKenney, second by councilmember Wilmot. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? I will be abstaining from this item since W J Blocher has been a client for twenty-seven years. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero, councilmember Branigan has abstained. Item fifteen G is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-six, an ordinance accepting the lowest response a bid received from Beacon Air Conditioning Heating and Refrigeration Incorporated to furnish and install five-ton gas package unit at Heritage Hall in accordance with letter bid twenty-two dash twenty thirty in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the Department of General Services.
I have a motion by councilmember Dunn, second by councilmember Wilmot. Is anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen H is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-seven, an ordinance accepting the lowest response a bid to furnish and install fencing on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid twenty-two dash sixty-seven oh three for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
I have a motion by councilmember Brennan, second by councilmember McKenney. Is anyone wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I've received a request to amend this item. If I could read the amendment into the record, please. The first whereas, we will be inserting the date of January fifth, two thousand twenty-three. The second whereas, the vendor E B E Fence Company will be inserted. The account number, and the third whereas will read zero zero one five zero 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 dash five eight zero one. Section one will reflect E B E Fence Company as the vendor. Section two will reflect E B E Fence Company as the vendor, and the amount will be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, on the amendment, I have a motion by councilmember Brennan, second by councilmember McKenney. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero to amend.
On the legislation, I have a, a motion by councilmember Brennan, second by councilmember McKenney. Mayor Glazer would like to speak.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, 'cause at fifteen D was this, if you look at it, it's the same. It was for fencing, so it's two different, one out, but fifteen, this is for general throughout the city. Where fifteen D was site-specific, where we have FEMA monies, so it's, it was a whole, whole different bid process, and it's just for four locations. And one of them is Vintage and Medoc, which it'll look much better, and you'll stop getting the, the calls, when's it gonna happen? So, it's gonna happen, hopefully, pretty soon. So that's just one, it's just same type of contract, but they're different. One was for a specific job sites.
Well, I am glad to hear that Vintage and Medoc is on this piece of legislation, because I get calls all the time. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen I is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-eight, an ordinance ratifying the emergency replacement of the in-plant lift station electrical control panel by Control Systems Incorporated in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars for the Department of Waste Water.
Got a motion by councilmember Lahat, second by councilmember Shaworth. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen J is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-nine, an ordinance ratifying the emergency replacement of the three in-plant lift station pumps by D X P doing businesses dealt to process equipment in the amount of sixty-eight thousand seventy dollars for the Department of Waste Water.
I have a motion by councilmember Shaworth, second by councilmember Wilmot. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen K is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and forty, an ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of West Stanford and West Loyola Lift Station Pump Number Two by Fluid Processing Pumps LLC in the amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars for the Department of Waste Water.
Got a motion by councilmember Brennan, second by councilmember McKenney. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen L is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-one, an ordinance ratifying the emergency replacement of three sixteen-inch check valves for the Thirty-Fifth and Ole Miss Lift Station by Innovative Flow Solutions Incorporated in the amount of twenty-nine thousand six hundred and forty dollars for the Department of Waste Water.
Got a motion by councilmember Brennan, second by councilmember Branigan. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Councilmembers all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen M is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-two, an ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of the Tenth and Maria Lift Station Pump Number Two by Precision P S I LLC in the amount of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents for the Department of Waste Water.
Got a motion by councilmember Shaworth, second by councilmember Dunn. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance authorizing the utilization of state contract number four four zero 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 two five nine seven two with Buckeye International Incorporated to purchase cleaning, disinfecting and janitorial supplies on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars annually. Item sixteen B is an ordinance approving amendment number three to the July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one agreement with DOM Development Corporation for miscellaneous carpentry work, labor only, increasing the agreement amount by a hundred thousand dollars for a total not-to-exceed amount of four hundred thousand dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen C is an ordinance accepting the lowest response a bid received from Economical Janitorial and Paper Supplies LLC for the purchase of janitorial supplies citywide in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-two dash sixty-seven oh four in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars annually for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen D is an ordinance accepting the lowest response a bid received from B and J Enterprise of Metairie Incorporated to furnish and install roofing for Fire Station Thirty-five in accordance with letter bid twenty-two dash twenty twenty-nine in the amount of seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen E is an ordinance accepting the lowest response a bid received from Arco Company Services Incorporated to purchase three transfer switches for generators in accordance with letter bid number twenty-two dash twenty thirty-six in an amount of twenty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars for the Department of Public Works. Item sixteen F is an ordinance accepting the lowest response a bid received to purchase emergency air lifting bags for heavy rescue in accordance with letter bid twenty-two dash twenty thirty-two for the city of Kenner Fire Department. Item sixteen G is an ordinance accepting the lowest response a bid received from Parets Men's Wear Incorporated for the purchase of uniforms and related services on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid twenty-two dash sixty-seven oh six in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen H is an ordinance approving amendment number five to the agreement with Linfield Hunter and Junius Incorporated dated March seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, for landscape architectural services to increase the not-to-exceed amount by three thousand six hundred dollars for the Department of Public Works. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees.
Councilmember Wilmot.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I can, I'd like to go back to fifteen C for a moment, just, just, just to discuss it. Fifteen C, it's, it's an important item, of course, we didn't have much discussion, if any, on it, and, and I think we, we should have a little bit, but, Mr. Gonzalez, if you will, just, just mention in general.
The federal land that can be no water through the school for the construction of sidewalks on vintage and loyalists. This fellow's ranch is going to be managed by the state DOTD, that's why you have some work remaining to the state DOTD. This goes back probably a year or two. Uh, the construction estimate at the time is two hundred and twenty-two thousand and some change. The federal government allocated fifty percent of the construction cost only. And the, the money that you see on, on this legislation is a hundred and seventy thousand and some change, which is the federal money that's going to be appropriate for the sidewalk, strictly construction. The city's going to have to pay for the union services. The design is roughly seventeen thousand five hundred, and then you got supplemental services such as survey, environmental clearance, traffic, because we're going to put electronic pedestrian crossings out there, and DOTD for ordination, that amount of twenty-four thousand. The entire city responsibility, you know, for design and supplemental services is roughly forty-one thousand five hundred. The city has selected a firm for design services, and once this agreement is executed, we were going, we are going to go ahead and execute the agreement with the assigned design consultant and authorized and proceed with the, um, design.
Beautiful. Thank you for that ex, detailed explanation, and this is, this is all good stuff, so we appreciate all your efforts, and, uh, again, this is with Kenner Discovery and putting sidewalks, it's really been long needed, so I think it's, it's, it's very good, and it's a big safety issue, so, thank you.
Councilmember Dunn?
Yeah, I just want to thank, um, all of you, all the mayor, the police chief, the council, for coming out and supporting the MLK march. You know, I thought it was a success for my first time, uh, coming out, and I was very pleased with the constituents, uh, who actually came out. I'm just glad, uh, one of the things that I heard that I'm very glad about, and that is, the people that came out, they really felt safe in Kenner, uh, marching, and we had no, uh, nothing that went on that was not, um, you know, we, we had no violence, no guns, and, uh, anything like that, because anytime you have a gathering of that size, you know, that has been a concern, you know, over the states, but I thank God that Kenner was safe enough for us to hold this, and we felt safe, but I thank everyone for coming out. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Councilmember McKenney?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just want to, um, say, first, I want to ask if, if you have a, um, clarification on, is there a timeline for, um, the dis, Kenner Discovery sidewalks? Is it this year, next year? Do we have any timeline for that?
Once this agreement is executed on the state level, you know, we can go ahead and execute it on the city level for the design. Uh, if you ask for a timeframe for design and construction, for construction to start, I would say probably it's going to be the fall, mid-September or so of this year. We gotta go through a process that's federal money involved, so the, the process is going to be done, you know, consumed, so I would say fast as the narrative is prepared.
Okay, I appreciate that, and if you can keep us updated on that, that would be great. Um, and then I also just want to congratulate, um, Councilwoman Dunn, Councilwoman Dunn for the great, um, program that she put together on, um, on Monday for MLK celebration. It was very well attended, it was very, um, long, but it was very educational, um, and I think that it was enjoyed by all, um, and I'm happy that the weather also, um, cooperated, so, um, thank you for all of your work. I know you did hard work, and I also know the council assistants did, um, a lot of extra work too, as well, so thank you for all of, um, all of those efforts, and it's great that the City of Kenner can do these, um, these types of events, so, thank you.
Uh, and I wanted to, I have, I've got a couple of things, uh, the dog stop is opening on Chateau, and, uh, West Esplanade next to Club for Fitness on February the fourth, uh, new business in District Four, and I want to apologize for telling everyone the, the executive session was going to be fifteen minutes, I didn't know we were going to have four quarters in overtime, so, next time, we will be not giving a timeout on how many minutes it's going to be. Anyone else have any comments? Council Clerk?
Yes, sir. Item eighteen is new business. Item eighteen A was taken at an earlier juncture in the meeting. Item nineteen is unfinished business and are motions to reconsider or remove from a tabled position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special job that matters.
I got, uh, Mister Matt Hotard. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Matt Hotard, Sixty-Six Red Oak, Kenner, Louisiana. I'm operating the Kenner Fire Department, and also the Kenner of the Firefighters Association. Um, on February twelfth, uh, the Kenner Firefighters Association went out with Councilwoman Dunn. Um, it's a part of our community initiative is to get to all five districts in the year twenty twenty-three, to go and do something for our community, to allow our community to see us in a different way other than just being at our job. So we reached out to Councilwoman Dunn, and in a very short time period, we got together a plan to help her clean up the parade route. So on, uh, the morning of February twelfth, with the, the weather coming in, we had about twenty members meet us across the street, and we were able to walk the route and to do a pretty comprehensive cleanup, um, before the parade. Uh, I was very proud of our, uh, participation, because, uh, most people have second jobs, and we had quite a good turnout, um, and also the fact that we filled up quite a few trash bags, and, uh, Councilwoman Dunn also helped me with, when I filled my trailer with the trash bags, is allowing us to go to Ivy Waste and, and go ahead and drop them. With that being said, I also wanted to thank, um, Paris and Bobby for coming out and taking pictures and, and helping us out with that, it means a lot to get, you know, our story out there and us out there. Um, lastly, I wanted to thank Councilwoman Dunn for, uh, the time spent with us, the honor to do this, um, hopefully you had as much fun doing it as we did, uh, we had some laughs, and we got to know you in a better light, and with that being said, um, we had something made for you, it's not much, but being this is your first parade, um, we just took the, the picture that we had, and we framed it just to give it to you to remember us by, so thank you.
Oh, this was beautiful. I just want to tell you, uh, thank you guys for coming out. I, I did see the comment on Facebook about, you know, I was the only one. I, I don't know who put that post out there, but, uh, it was said that I was the only one, so I'm going to let you all in that little joke. Uh, it was over twenty-some firefighters that came out, and I was the only woman, and they asked why. I said, well, who don't want to be in the midst of all of these young handsome firefighters? I was not about to share them with another woman, so I, thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
And it meant a lot to us, not to march down Reverend Richard Wilson Drive with paper all over the thing, so when they were taking pictures and all of that, that meant a lot to us. Thank you all so much. This will definitely be in my office, because I was the only one.
Thank you again.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mister Hotard. Uh, Mister Al Morella?
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Loyola Drive, is this microphone on? Because I went from loud, now it's on.
We turned the volume down.
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Loyola Drive, fifth district, fifty-one years. First topic, Ivy Waste. Last year, there was four or five investigative reports called Talking Trash, uh, about a lot of, uh, issues with, uh, Ivy Waste. Now, there's more investigative reports going on across the parish line involving this vandal that we have a contract with, and it's nothing nice, make most of the same issues that we were dealing with back here. Now, I want to ask you, I want to direct this to you, uh, Mike Power, uh, is there a hundred-and-eighty-day clause in this contract? About a hundred-and-eighty-day clause, I mean, we, uh, have one with Romelli that we could call him in there and give him a hundred-and-eighty-day notice for non-performance or whatever, that we're going to terminate that contract, but we got to give him a hundred-and-eighty-day notice. Do we have something like that in this contract?
The Ivy Waste contract has a one-hundred-and-eighty-day clause, yes.
We need to invoke it, because this is very embarrassing to the City of Kenner, what's going on, it involves anything from political payback to the dirty, filthy game of politics to, uh, overcharging, uh, millions and millions of dollars to the people in the world, to the taxpayers in the world. We need to get this guy out of here, and I'm going to go a step further. I'm going to issue a personal invitation to Sydney Tories to come to the next Kenner council meeting and answer questions, since you are doing business with this city, even though this is across, this involves us, he's on our payroll. Now, uh, public announcement, uh, I'm sure everybody in the City of Kenner is aware the Kenner Star is no more. Uh, a lot of people didn't get it, they supposedly, supposedly just sent it to the registered voters, but I hadn't got one in a couple of months, so I made the call. They told me for financial reasons, they were no longer publishing the Kenner Star. And one more thing, uh, nothing was mentioned, but Alan Katz, who was a columnist in that publication, has passed away. So, uh, this is the last word I got, now, they did tell me they don't know whether or not they're going to republish it or not later on down the road, but for right now, Kenner Star is no more. Now, twelve A, I want to direct this to you, Mister Gloria, so I know you said you're going to have this information online about the proceeds, dollar figure, uh, how the money's going to be dispersed in the terms of, uh, the disbursement, but, uh, a lot of people in the city don't have computers, so I would like you, when you get this information, to, uh, bring it to the council meeting, and let's go on the record with it. I'd like to know how much money we collected from that auction, I'd like to know how it's going to be dispersed, whether it's going to be in the district, whether it's going to be citywide, and what are the specific terms. Now, fifteen K, uh, the lift station, West Stamford and West Loyola. Um, we need to make sure that this contractor, at the end of the day, when he's done his work, he cleans his mess up over there, because I've been talking to people all over that area, and they've been telling me they had, they were dealing with a mess on West Loyola and West Stamford.
Mister Morella, your three minutes and twenty seconds is up.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, man, so when I don't use the three minutes, that'll compensate for the twenty seconds. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
I'll dock you next meeting.
Thank you, buddy.
First giving honor of Father God.
Please state your name and address, Mister Cade.
My name is Oscar Cade Senior. I'm at fifteen oh seven Garden Street, Kenner, Louisiana, and I've been here since nineteen I stand to make these statements and remarks. I am proud, once again, as you can see, I'm wearing my old badge, but the mayor and I had a talk, but I'm so proud of the fact that we now have united Kenner, united Kenner of the Parish of Jefferson and the State of Louisiana and the United States of America. I was so proud when our mayor, Councilman Dunn, Joe Stagni, and other council members, we marched, and one thing for sure, the mayor and that front line is in good shape, because we left the band about a block and a half, couple of times. But really and truly, I am proud of Kenner, and I want you guys to know that I've been working with Jefferson Parish at least the election appointment since nineteen eighty-four. I came in under the Garland administration, and this pen came from Joe Yanni and Sal and the guys, but where I'm proud of you guys at is that it's a new day in Kenner. We uniting, we not looking at one side of Kenner, we looking at the whole Kenner, and that means a lot. Where you are united, there's peace. Their blessing flows, and godliness is in a lot of you guys that's on the council, and that make me feel so proud. I love you, and I'm going to step down after the next election from the voting area and start on my books. I'm going to write three books, and I'm going to share this with you all. It's going to be Man with No Colors, the title. Who Love You? Who's Your Daddy? And Why Am I Treated So Bad? Those are the three topics of the books that I want to write. Kenner, I'm proud of the mayor, because he's a good listener, and he's a doer. Dee Dunn, and you guys for what you all did for those old people while they are still living, I am so proud of that. I bought these three pictures just to show you guys in nineteen fifty-four, Kenner, Washington At eight, I was school safety patrol, and as I got older, I ran for Councilman-at-Large. All this, by riding on the shoulders of the ones that came before me. I don't lie, I don't cheat, I don't do drugs. We put Kenner, Louisiana on the back of my uniforms, Cades Raiders, and when we traveled to Florida, Mississippi, and places of that nature, people would ask, where is Kenner? I say where the New Orleans Airport is located, and that led, that made a lot of people know where we were, but I'm so proud of you all. Mayor Glazer, he asked me a question in the march, he made a statement, right, he said, Mister Cade, I guess I'm doing everything all right, I haven't heard any phone calls from you. Mister Mayor, we are doing things right. I'm proud of you guys, I love you, God bless, and take care of Kenner.
Thank you, Mister Cade, and Mister Morella, I won't dock you the twenty seconds, since I'll let him go a little bit over. Madam Clerk?
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 Madam Clerk?